Okay, now we shy, we have a poster too. It's kind of falling apart, so I'm just gonna put it on the floor. So you can kind of see it and then he's never gonna play it.
Um, let's shut the microphone down here.
We could, that whole thing comes down.
There's a um button on the right side, it's electric, on the right side, up and down.
Oh good, then we can see.
Here we go.
Much, yes, good job.
The State Public Special School is having a duct tape challenge. We are doing this to help raise money for the holiday angels. We started the challenge on October twelfth. And two, and it's tomorrow. So there is still time to delay.
The holiday angels in the organization that helps local families provide items for Christmas family. Ah, families ask for items like snowblows, socks, coats, clothes, and other items.
This is, this is how our challenge works. The elementary students are bringing in money for their grade level. The grade that brings in the most money gets to duct tape their grade levels teacher to the wall at our next caring assembly.
The teachers that are representing their grade level are kindergarten Mrs. Toddie, first grade Mr. Newman, second grade Mr. Bird, third grade Mrs. Flanders, fourth grade Mr. Mahone, and specialist Mr. Lindstrom. Then if we raise one thousand five hundred, we get to duct tape a teacher and Mrs. Jacobs to the wall. And if we raise one thousand eight hundred, we get to duct tape a teacher, Mrs. Jacobs, and Mrs. Clay. To the wall.
Where do you pay?
Make the checks out.
I think we're, we're right, Jackson.
Yeah.
We have some awesome people donate some duct tape for our show. They are Sam Laners, Ken, Ken Davenport, and Jessica Wardman. We are so excited to see who gets duct taped to the wall. But we are even more excited that we get to help local banks, thank you.
I think you should leave that there.
Ah, no thanks.
Okay, I guess could we get an introduction of our students?
Yes. Oh, you want an introduction? Yeah, mine back up guys. Tell her people you are. Who what major? Go ahead, Jackson.
I'm Jackson, I'm in first grade.
I'm Julian, I'm in second grade.
I'm Kaden, and I'm in third grade.
I'm Liberty, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Emma, and I'm in fifth grade.
Thank you very much. Can I ask you a question, Emma?
Oh no.
Do you, do you have a hat or something? Cause I think if you walked right around here right now, I know I've got something I wanna put in. And I think some of my friends might wanna help you duct tape Mrs. Clay, so. If you've got, if you've got a hat or something.
No collecting today.
Oh yeah.
No, we don't need any.
Just walk right down, right through this horseshoe here.
Oh look at, she was going right to the pocket.
There you go.
That was not the intention.
Oh, you're not done yet, you're not done yet, Emma, keep going.
That was not the intention.
We know, it doesn't.
Now that we know what the goal is.
Now we know what the prize is.
It does go to a great cause, doesn't it?
Hallelujah.
Oh no.
On behalf of the board, I would like to thank our students for the presentation. I'm working for a worthy cause and having the courage sometimes to stand up in front of a crowd and talk is also very uh good. And we appreciate you coming before the board and letting us know what you're working for. And hopefully you can get enough duct tape to do the job. Thank you for coming.
There's enough duct tape, the whole chance in Idaho.
Thanks guys, guys for being there.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Then moving on to the next agenda item. Uh, I think uh board members got a copy, I believe, of the election results in St. Craig County. I don't think we have to have any real discussion with that. If you were not aware of the results, then you have an opportunity to cruise that. Personally, I think the only one that surprised me was the Attorney General. I was hoping that he would be reelected and he was not, so. But the rest of them, I didn't find any real surprises at all, so. So at that point, uh, you're welcome to look them over. If you didn't get a copy of it, here's a copy here. Okay. At this time, do we have any other comments from any board members or our superintendent?
Um, attended the play, it was fantastic. Kurt's son was in it, John went. Um, I was gonna say too, uh, Eric had taken me backstage and showed me what some of the monies we went to. There's a big, I have some pictures, I'll email them to you guys. Um, he's standing next to like the big rack where they put all their um supplies or whatever. It's a big heavy duty goes way up high, they're not even using all of it, so they're able to kind of alleviate the room. And then he showed me too how they kinda have the big, how they have set up for the students cause they had such a large production where they had them putting on makeup and costumes. Um, and he just mentioned, you know, if, if any more funds were to come available, they would really like to put like LED lights and things back there so that they could turn off the large lights when students go back and forth in and out of the stage and that door doesn't open and let in a lot of light. So they have a lot more they have planned if it should be available.
Yeah, I just, one more comment on that, I, I agree with you, Tricia, it was phenomenal. Um, I was there on uh Friday night and I would guess that that auditorium was eighty to eighty-five percent full. Um, I would predict that next year you're not gonna be able to buy a ticket at the door that you're gonna want.
I think you're gonna have to reserve it.
Uh, you're gonna have to reserve your tickets. Um, eighty plus students, acting, uh, stage crew, musicians, lighting, sound. Uh, the number of students that are involved in this uh year over year is exploding. And to walk down and talk to the students afterwards, uh, they're having a blast doing this. They are really having a blast, so. Um, I saw a couple of community members. One of them uh worked on the uh committee that did the kickoff and was a big part in helping with the referendum. And she was actually in tears seeing students performing on that stage. And then another community member came up and just ran it ear to ear. I just can't believe that, that we're sitting in that auditorium in St. Craig Central that, you know, he stated this was a twenty, twenty-plus year journey and isn't it worth it? So just so many good things happening in that auditorium.
Okay. Thank you for the comments, uh, we have anybody else? Okay. With that, then we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is an update on our SCC Community Education Program. Community Ed Director Paul Aden.
Are we going outside for unicycles?
I know unicycles, I thought about Jack, we've got a long agenda. Uh, you should all have a schedule, if you don't, I have excellence here. Um, I could print it about the fortune, thanks to the district office, they do a great job. Um, so we have unicycle get this, um, Blackhawk Cycle, I mean, that's a little thing for them. And then Dr. Gilhousen, who's a chiropractor in town, is doing a series of wellness uh classes. Let's see how that goes on a per side market. So the Hammond Library, the Roberts Library, and the Baldwin Wellness Center. And then just an update that for the last couple of years, I've written grants for unicycles and I've set up. Cause for the last few years, I could tell a kid when he came in, if you go across that gym unassisted, that's your unicycle. And I've gone from where I used, it'd take them eight weeks to learn their learning two to four. Cause they got a big motivation, but they also all come in now and go, huh, heard you get a unicycle. So I've gotta write a lot of grants. Um, I just wrote a grant for St. Craig Electric, I wrote for four seventy, I got three seventy. I came and took a picture of the kids, and actually I had thirty-two kids there Thursday night trying to listen to football games and I couldn't go. Um, I'm getting a lot of younger kids because they are, uh, their kids care is getting picked up at the back of school in front of the gym and the mom's like, the kids like, yeah. So we kept it reasonable, it's ten dollars. So in the grant I wrote for St. Craig Electric, I asked for uh twenty sets of juggling balls. We're gonna start reintroducing juggling again. So a lot of my jugglers have went on to play. Um, and in the meantime, a parent offered to make juggling balls for everyone out of tennis balls. They told the price, some of them, some of them use that whole three seventy for the unicycles. I've got an Anari grant sitting out there, I haven't heard, haven't heard yet. And then as January first, I can write to the line of health again for um another thousand dollars. So continue the, you, you guys gotta come and see these unicycles, they're pretty fantastic. And they're learning fast, we've been donated um four giraffes, so we have five or six giraffes now which are the tall unicycles. These kids out in third, fourth grade are getting up on giraffes and unicycling. They're pretty cool, I think, they're pretty excited. And they're good, and the young ones, I don't know what grade Kennedy and Ava are in.
They're second.
They're second?
Mm-hmm.
We used to tell them they should be in third, cause they sometimes show the focus for those kids.
No.
When they're competition. So it's, I have thirty to seventy people there every Thursday night from four to eight. I got a couple parents, adults that are helping, so. The O'Briens are back in town, they moved back to Roberts, so the Tanyas wanna help me start the program. Chris comes and Tanya, she helps one of our advanced kids do some high school. Chris helps me maintain the unicycles and yeah, 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 so it's all good. And invite you to come and just watch the cast. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Paul Aden?
Thanks, Paul Aden.
Thanks, Paul Aden.
How many years now?
Ten.
That's awesome, thank you so much.
Very cool.
Are you getting kids from other communities?
I did, I've got two sisters from uh that go to school in New Richmond. They live in three different homes, they're living grandma's for a couple days, mom, dad, and all three learned in two weeks. And uh, it's pretty cool kids, so. I get a couple from New Richmond and I get, I have three from Hudson this year. One was uh someone that moved from Roberts to Hudson, now she brought her two friends and they all live together. Yeah, it is good, it's intergenerational, I've got people all the way up to a little younger than me. They're sixty-four, and um so it's super intergenerational, um, and they help each other and um it's sort of, they play games for twenty-five minutes, which is tag on one end of the gym. They um, we have a ride across for birthdays, um, and they'll really all support each other.
I know it's hard.
You all wanna do it.
I'm gonna break an ankle, but thank you very much.
Thirty minutes from one parent's disability.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the good work there, Paul Aden, I appreciate the effort there. Next item is Mr. Brock Dian and Sarah Coles uh with our annual audit report. Look the margin. Alan, welcome Brock.
Thanks, uh, good evening, thanks for having me over here. Um, we're uh actually here very early this year compared to the last few years. You know, it's probably been as late as February, March or something, a couple of years back uh because of delays at the state and information that belongs in your, in your audit or whatever. This year, I think, and then finance for a great job pulling things together. This is, this is the first meeting I have this year for schools. So uh, that's a testament to your team here, getting things pulled together. So it's not even due at this, it's down in DPI yet, but it's done, it's out, so. It's all good news, um, I'm gonna keep it real brief, generally I've had a handout ready too and I have one prepared, I grabbed the email. And so you're kinda stuck working through the booklet a little bit here. Um, I don't like folding and I'm home with all the pages here, so unless you want me to go from cover to cover, I won't do that.
Number by number.
I'll give you a couple pages for reference in this, but if you have any questions on the audit process or anything, you'll see. So um, a couple of reports are included in the booklet, the ones, the first one's on page one, that's the audit report itself. Uh, you look there to tell if uh, if there's any problems with the, the audit report itself. If it's not, if you've received an un- audit by the opinion, that means I'll be honest and just looking at my children. Last year, for year seventeen, there's quite a bit of change, so. Talked a little bit about um approximately ten new pages to your booklet last year. This year was a quieter year from an audit standard standpoint, so the reporting standard, so should be very comparable if you're side by side. Um, at the very end of, of the booklet, you'll find what uh a lot of people refer to as the management layer. So maybe schedule findings is defined at the very back. Um, in this case, you also have a great good report here too. There's one item that I continue to report, it's called limited segregation duties. Um, not that you'd be overly concerned about, it's something we talk about every single year. Uh, it simply means that there's not enough people involved in the transaction cycles from an auditor standpoint where we'd like to see more segregation, it's not practical, we're not gonna hire much enough additional people uh to have, to segregate all those responsibilities. So you rely on your control, that's where you guys come into play a little bit here. Um, obviously if you're looking at things like the budget, approving activity, stuff like that, so. We rely on those type of controls, we test the controls, make sure they're happening and didn't find any problems, it's all super pat, so. Just the reality you live with, something to be aware of and uh, you know, just. Um, alright, so some financial results, if you're looking for that, probably looking on pages six and eight. Page six is the balance sheet and page eight is the revenues and expenses. So I'll kind of look at my comments in those two pages. And we're gonna talk about your general fund, which is the first column on those two pages. You'll find a section on page six called fund balance at the bottom there. And that's where we focus to compare you to other schools or benchmarks, to see how healthy we consider the district here. And you should see an unassigned fund balance of three point one million. What we do is we compare that to expenses, which you'll find uh sub totaled on page eight of eighteen point four million. And we come up with a ratio, and we don't have that in the booklet, but we calculated and we didn't hand out the statistics. And you're at seventeen point one percent. Uh, you may or may not talk about this during budget time, I know we talk about it every year during uh the audit. You have a policy, you wanna stay between seventeen and nineteen percent, it's a very, you know, narrow, hopefully speaking, like for the rest of the clients I work with, um, goal, but you, you've been very consistent and you've hit that. Um, anywhere from seventeen to eighteen point five over the last four years. So consistent with your policy, uh, which, you know, again, that's credit to you guys for managing the finances. Um, we typically, and I point this out each year too, but a rule, um, we usually suggest more of a minimum of twenty-five percent, a little bit higher. You guys do produce a job of operating within the, the, uh, what you have at your end. That is just a measurement at June thirtieth of eighteen. So the reason we typically say we want to honestly twenty-five percent is because that is a starting point for the year and your cash flow is up and down throughout the year, right, it's not level throughout the year. And so we typically see schools, they don't have to borrow on a short-term basis with a bank or whatnot if they, if they've hit that closer to twenty-five percent at your end. And you, again, uh, last few years, you haven't had a short-term borrow, you did dip into it at least one point here in twenty eighteen for just about, nice of course, a little part from a cash flow standpoint. Um, just uh, it wasn't that much interest for you guys, but other districts uh that have like short-term borrow, you're gonna incur significant, significant amount of interest each year, so. Um, wasn't a huge issue for you, but something to be aware of and that's the reason why we kind of talked about that. Um, for perspective, we work with thirty-two school districts and that average uh for seventeen was twenty-six point nine. I don't have it summarized yet for twenty eighteen, we're not done with most of our districts yet, so. Since that's available, we can let you know that for twenty eighteen as well. Alright, you do have a couple other funds there, on page six, you'll see a debt service fund. Um, but the only important thing to note there is all principal and interest was made this year. You'll see a slight decrease in fund balance, you uh, if you were able to pay for your principal and interest due for the year through levy and use of twenty, about twenty-four thousand dollars of the fund balance. So you s, you still have six hundred and fifty thousand dollars there, which originated and is used for principal and interest at some point in the future, so you just use twenty-four thousand back here this year. Um, and you also have a capital projects fund. Uh, the reason these three funds are listed separately is because of the bigger funds, they're called major funds. So we talk about those separately and then the detail of all the other funds are in the back a little bit. But your capital projects fund, as you know, you've had considerable activity throughout the last few years here. And you'll see that number, um, uh, you spent it down from seven hundred and seventy thousand down to ninety-four thousand fund balance at the end of eighteen. So uh, the big expense this year was energy efficiency projects in twenty eighteen, so. Of course, without that, we take, take that into account, you'll see those expenditures on page eight. And uh, ultimately those costs were captured in the fixed assets, which were brand onto your books in a different location, but uh, um, that, those assets were placed in the service. Um, other than that, you do have some smaller funds, as I mentioned, you could turn back to page forty-seven if you had an interest in looking at these individually. Um, education trust, that one increased from forty thousand, forty-three thousand to a hundred, so that was a significant increase there primarily due to a large donation from the state, um, I believe that's for uh girls athletics. Um, you have a food service fund, which has been performing very well as, as well. That went from two hundred thousand to two hundred and sixty-three thousand in fund balance at the end of the year. So it's increased about sixty thousand from the prior year. And uh, community service fund, um, increased by about twenty thousand as well. So you had uh some increase in some um programs that you're running there, which is uh resulted in an increase in fund balance. And you do have, the last one here is a small capital projects fund you established back in twenty fifteen. You just put fifty dollars in the house requirement, it was a new fund at the time uh for DPI and that's for a capital improvement plan, so that's something available to you at some point in the future. She didn't wanna fund that, you potentially save that out of that. Uh, but right now it just sits there with the fifty dollars and I think there's more of interest or something that are in the year. Alright, so that's it for the funds, that should tie in closely to what uh, what you look at anyway from any basis for your budget. The only other thing we typically point out during this presentation is a summary of your long-term debt. And again, as you take on debt the last few years, um, you, you apply that against this limitation that states is you can only have so much tax-supported debt at any given point in time. And I, I believe you, your peak there was at about sixty-seven percent of the max, you weren't at the max. And as you pay that principal down, you didn't have any new debt um in twenty eighteen, so now you're down to fifty-five point one percent. I'll continue to be able to go down as you pay your principal off. Um, that's it, so overall, uh, overall, uh, very good results from a reporting standpoint and from the numbers, so.
I guess the, the one comment that I would have on the fund balance is that, you know, we've set the policy to keep it between uh seventeen and nineteen percent. I know it's the Ford, the owners feeling that we should keep it a little higher than that. I guess our feeling on the board has been uh, it's a lot of money to tie up in a fund balance when we have more needs elsewhere, so. And I guess at this point, we'll probably continue to keep it in, within that range, but uh, you know, monitor our budgets as closely as we can to maintain our expenditures within uh what we've budgeted for, so. It's good that you keep an eye on it for us, so. Any other questions for Brock? It'll give me some interesting reading.
There we go.
Tom still gives me a hard time because I used to read him cover to cover, so. Well, thank you very much for the report and it sounds like things are going well, so. Thank you, thank our district office personnel for uh keeping an eye on those numbers and uh keeping them books in order. So it's greatly appreciated, so, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Next item on the agenda is our financial report, starting with our treasurer's report.
Bank account balances as of October thirty-first, twenty eighteen, citizens state checking, six hundred thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, fourteen cents. Citizens money market, one million, one hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Citizens money market fund, forty-six, fifty-one dollars, twenty-three cents. Citizens money market suicide prevention fund, seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. American deposit management referendum proceeds, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventeen cents. For total bank account balances of one million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars, sixty-six cents.
Okay. We've heard the treasurer's report, do we have a motion to accept?
Move to accept the treasurer's report and the accompanying financial documents.
Second.
We have a motion, John, second David, accept the treasurer's report, financial statements supporting it uh as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Then the next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. It consists of approval of our meeting minutes, of our October first meeting, our October fifteenth meeting. Meeting minutes from our wage and benefit committee on October fifteenth. Our special board meeting minutes from October twenty-ninth. And our wage and benefit meeting minutes from November fifth. Our SCC board learning meeting minutes from November fifth. Approval of the bi-monthly bills for November. Uh, approval of appointments and contract modifications for Ashley Johnson, seven and a half hour elementary special ed para. Laura Anderson is a seven-hour uh middle school special ed para. John Tacman is our high school winter strength and conditioning coordinator, so.
To accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Kirk, second David, accept the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is our student enrollment update.
This month, we're uh up five students in seats, early childhood through grades twelve to one thousand, six hundred and four. Um, we have uh in our in district virtual school, twenty, full-time, thirty-six, part-time, uh residents and open enrolled students, we have one hundred and seven in the charter school versus sixty-three at this time last year. And um, one hundred and three in building in seats, open and rolled students. And then the bottom column, you can see the net difference, we, we have two hundred and ten students open and rolled in versus one hundred and ten open and rolled out for a net of plus one hundred. Uh, free introduced lunch rate, you see, uh, currently is seventeen point four seven percent. I wanna thank all administrative assistants in each building and in the district office as always for their attention to detail and work on making this document, which is very informative and always completely accurate, um, which is very important, very important, so thank you.
Uh, I guess I've got a couple of questions, uh, free and reduced lunch, then uh, we're seeing a reduction in the percentage due to uh people not applying or that they, we don't know if there's a need or.
Yeah, we don't.
We're doing better in the economy.
Yeah, it's hard to tell who's not applying, who's applying, right? But I know Alene oversees that program and works with everybody in the, in the offices in each building trying to get that out, I mean, it's, it's different than it was in years past and it was direct certification.
October day two.
Yeah, plus this is that typical um drop-off where they, they automatically, they qualified last year and then they automatically qualify through October seventeenth. Um, and then unless they show proof that they continue to qualify, then they drop off, so. But there's always a dip, typically this month, but it's, it's been very consistent between seventeen and nineteen percent, I don't mind, five years here.
Okay, are there any questions on the student enrollment update? If you're hearing none, then we will move on to our next. If you're hearing none, then we will move on to our next item on the agenda. Uh, children come first conference report, from our director, special ed, Pat Bashy, so Pat.
I'll send, um, the brochure that they gave us at the conference, um, around, um, I was asked to present at this conference. Um, the conference is sponsored by Wisconsin Family Ties, which is a parent advocacy organization. They provide lots of information to parents of kids, particularly for kids who have behavioral and emotional difficulties. Um, types of information they share with families include, um, rights that parents and children have in education, um, mental health, um, resources, um, treatment options, educational options, um, all very helpful to parents. Uh, one of their employees has been working with one of our families for the past six years. And I have been involved with that family as well. Um, they asked me to come and tell the story of one of the student's, um, journey over the past six years and, um, of our collaboration together in helping this young man, um, become far more successful in school. And he has gone from being a young man who, um, was very physically aggressive, throwing chairs, flipping tables, um, kicking and scratching staff. Been through a couple of day treatment facilities, one of which he was kicked out of due to the physical aggression. We provided homebound services to this young man, um, in a variety of locations because the family was homeless for a period of time. Child has been reintegrated into school, we had a full-time care professional for him. Um, lots of modified programming and now he is in virtually all general education courses. Is doing the coursework without significant modifications. And last year he was named student of the month. So we've had a really great, um, and long journey with him. Um, some of the things that the Wisconsin Family Ties people spoke of at the conference that really gave, um, St. Croix Central some excellent PR. Um, they talked about how we differentiated our programming for this young man significantly. Um, the young man was not very interested in anything that looked like traditional education. So we took grade level standards and tried to apply them to more service projects for him. For example, one of the service projects was, um, developing goodie bags for children who were hospitalized. We had the young man doing reading to identify, you know, what materials, what, um, o- objects and items can go into a hospital. Um, how much can you provide in those goodie bags? Um, we used mathematics, how many bags are you gonna need? Um, what are you going to do about, um, donating versus, versus purchasing items? Kind of coming up with a budget for getting items, um, and we decided we'd go for donations instead of buying things. Um, and then communication as well, you know, how are you going to get people to donate all of these items for the goodie bags? And then contacting the hospitals, you know, going and presenting those things to the hospitals. Um, these are things that the young man's never gonna forget, probably some of the best learning that he's done in his life. Family Ties also, um, gave some kudos to our school district for, for example, um, looking at the family identifying trauma-informed care. It's definitely needed for these children and we took that. And initially I shared that information with the child's IEP team, but now we have gone to the point where we've got traumatized, sensitive schools as a district-wide. We're doing district-wide work, so all teaching staff are going to know and be able to assist kids by knowing how to be sensitive to those kids who've experienced, um, adverse childhood experiences. Um, they also provided kudos for us providing services, special education services in a number of living situations for the young man in helping provide transportation for off-site placements, the day treatment. Um, and just for our consistent communication to the parent, um, practically twenty-four seven for a number of years. So we got, um, some very, very positive reviews by those participants in the session. It was a great experience, I learned a lot there. I texted, um, Shelley and Lindsay my first hour there saying, you simply have to come to this next year. There's a different feel to that conference than there is in some of the conferences put on by, or sponsored by the Department of Public Instruction. There were many parents there. There were service providers from county agencies, private agencies that help support students and provide services for them. And there were kids, at-risk kids and kids with special needs who came and they had their own, um, sessions that they went to. And then they presented at the end of the conference, it was so cool. So it was just a great overall experience and we got some really good PR, so.
Sounds like a wonderful conference. Then the parents, parents of the students then were also given assistance as a, as we were able to provide that then?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So often these, uh, student issues don't necessarily get resolved unless, uh, we have a parent participation.
Right, um, that parent was involved heavily all the way through the process. There were two social workers from St. Croix County who were assigned to assist the family, plus the advocate from Wisconsin Family Ties. It was a real wraparound experience for the family.
Sounds like a very positive experience. Thank you for the hard work, thank you for the presentation, you look at some very good comments. Any other questions for Pat?
Just a comment, I would say, you know, you got a lot of kudos and I think you deserve that. Um, I, I can see, I think you and our special education staff really care about those individual students. I have many friends in other districts with students with special needs and, and it's, they're constantly fighting to get services for their child that shouldn't have to fight for. And I, I see that you guys are extending beyond that to try to really help those kids and, um, I know they appreciate it and I appreciate it and thank you for doing such a great job.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, then our next presentation on the agenda here is our two thousand seventeen, eighteen school report card presentation by our director of teaching and learning, Mr. Nick Bean, so welcome, Nick.
Yeah. Thanks for the opportunity to present on this, um, quite frankly, I, uh, I have nothing to do with the scores and yet I get to speak here tonight, uh, with regards to the outstanding, um, success created by the building leaders. So it's, uh, one of those things, I guess, uh, you, I remember here early in life, you remain humble, get hungry. And these are one of those things that I think, uh, you'll hear every one of these staff members speak to, we can do better, we want to do better, they're already working to do better. Not to get a higher score, that's a byproduct of, uh, helping students learn more and become more successful. But something to be proud of, as you hopefully already see the score, taking a look at the scores. Um, we'll go through some of the details tonight, I'll keep it brief, I know there's certainly much to do. Um, and, uh, you can spend time, as you probably already have, on a few more of the details. Just so you're aware, the PowerPoint that was, is being used, there are some slight adjustments, not to numbers, just some, uh, other language included, so. We can update that panel as soon as, uh, the record. The state report card takes into account only certain areas. It doesn't take into account things like, uh, participation in performing arts, athletics clubs, uh, the character education that is led in every building. So I want to preface this as well to state, um, this is one form of data, an important form of data, certainly, uh, for us to be able to use to compare to other districts around the entire state. Um, again, to, uh, allow for some accumulation of data to point us in certain directions. But it can't take in and encompass everything that this district is doing. Um, and that's important to keep in mind that, um, our building leaders are using many other forms of data to drive their meetings with building leadership teams, DLC, et cetera, on a daily to weekly and monthly basis to make decisions that are best for our kids. There's a lot of information, one that I would point to that's been best for me in my first go-around and really digging through a report card is the first link that I have on here, a report, uh, card guide, very in-depth and very helpful. Um, so if you have questions about why or how something further, I can certainly sit down with you individually or you can spend time with these sites. It's very, very helpful. I thought it was important to include, um, it's always nice to look down the road at the neighbors and, and even around the state. Keep in mind our goal of, uh, being in the top ten by twenty twenty. Uh, so included that there and looking at, uh, some of the, some of the data, number sixty-seven in the state out of the K four twelve public school districts. And I wanted to be clear on that, K four twelve, we are number ninety-five if you include some K eight districts or nine twelve districts. So districts can have different definitions, but I didn't think it's fair to use our K four twelve in comparison to a K eight or nine twelve district. Um, I'm looking at that, so, uh, number sixty-seven is pretty darn good, I can't recall.
Where were we last year, I thought we were somewhere around one hundred and twenty-nine.
And I'm not sure how, or if that included the same qualifiers I just stated and eliminating a couple dozen schools that are not similar.
I'm not sure either.
But let's say it did.
So what I'm hearing is next year it's thirty-four.
So, uh, number seven hundred and sixty-seven, that's out of thirty-nine schools, I believe, and then number three are middle boys as well. Uh, so our district report card link is a stop, when I won't open that, that's about twelve pages, gold and depth. Um, about a seventy-nine point nine, uh, outstanding, of course, um, at that next level, of course. Uh, the significantly exceeds, exceeds expectations and, uh, very close there at the, uh, A and three. Which, based on the work that I'm seeing, again, by, by this, uh, leadership team, the building leaders, including Pat, as she's in all buildings, um, I, I don't hesitate to say that we will be there within a very short time. A few report card changes, I think you were made aware of this last year as well in looking back at some of the presentations. Uh, test participation not included, and I think that's an important change. It is by law that students can opt out, we can't change that, yet we were held accountable in the past, um, for when they did. So, uh, it seems like a no-brainer to make that change. It is included in the federal report, however. Uh, Badger is no longer included, it's all forward data now that we've been doing that for enough years too. I did want to point out, um, and we included a couple other pieces of information, I think it's good to go back a few years. Three-year trend data, this is regarding our district overall score. You could take a look at things are, are trending upward. Um, certainly, there is always area in room that we're already working in and growing on, uh, district student achievement, uh, which is a big part of our formula. Again, I think you've been educated in that in the past because of our makeup, basically, uh, most importantly, our economically disadvantaged group is so low. We're expected to have higher student achievement and less on the growth area. I think it's a forty, almost forty percent is our, in our formula for district percent, thirty-nine, thirty-nine for district student achievement. Then roughly around ten percent for student growth. So that's a, uh, certainly a big area we focus on. Then within our student growth and our closing gaps as well. Closing gaps is always, uh, the most difficult piece to work on. Closing gaps in essence is you're trying to push everybody up, but you're trying to pu- push the lagging groups even up at a higher rate. And unfortunately, I'm here to report that most school districts didn't figure out the silver bullet for that or the magic bullet in terms of, uh, how to really make that happen. But I do know that, uh, we're continuing to work through that, discussions at every building level and administrative teams. How can we serve our different subgroups better, um, to get them to that grade level, um, as quick as possible, but at the same point as, uh, as impactful as possible.
What did the state forward go through, that's, this is only like, if you're talking testing data, it's only state forward testing data? And that goes to what grade level?
Third through eighth grade and then tenth grade.
Tenth grade, okay, I was just wondering, I didn't notice the high school grade level.
It's only included, how about, uh, third through eighth grade?
Okay, on that.
How do I get it back to you? Present. Okay. Then the individual schools, again, these links are here for if you wanted to go through this, or if you go through the DPI site. Outstanding building, building level report cards as well. A preface, the high school may change, uh, a little bit, not something still to be proud of, but they are going to start including, uh, student growth as a part of that, um, next year, uh, using some tiers information like kids involved in CT coursework, um, aspire. They're gonna include the aspire growth data from now on, ninth, tenth to eleventh, uh, where they've had third through eighth before and such. So that will alter that score, I can't predict in any way whether that needs down, up, whatever that is.
But it connects, you know, they're connected.
Correct, yeah, can show some growth, which I think is important. Um, however, I think you're already aware of this, Kurt, in the high school, uh, leadership is already wanting to determine some progress monitoring on their own within the building. And, uh, they're doing a pre-ACT here coming up, like, November twenty-eighth, is that right, Kurt?
Yep.
Uh, all juniors will take the exact same, uh, ACT, not, not the exact DLC come spring. But the format will be the similar, the same, everything. Um, they'll get results back shortly after that and then staff can use that data, as well as our ninth and tenth graders taking the aspire, uh, now and then again in the winter, and then again in the spring, the state level one spring. Again, to be able to provide us data that we can then use and grow upon and hopefully grow, um, throughout the year. So we didn't want to wait, we wanted our own internal measurements and we're excited to see how that can benefit the new staff. There's also some three-year school trend data, um, on the bottom, another link to that as well where I broke it up, um, by building. So all the, um, the four, the first page includes the four, uh, three-year building level scores, but then it's broken down by grade level. So we have the elementary student achievement, growth, gaps, and post-secondary readiness, and then every building thereafter. And again, considering time taken, how in-depth we could go, I have some notes later that we can share about this, but I won't walk through every piece. There are four priority areas, you're aware of this, again, student achievement, uh, there is a link there for the SCC history that links to the Ford exam, the ACT. Um, and, uh, it includes the Badger and, uh, what was it, WAS or WKCE? Uh, it goes back seven years, a lot of great data there to take a look and unfortunately, some of it doesn't connect. Uh, again, from going from the Badger to the Ford, there's correlation of the, the, the bridge in terms of apples to apples isn't exactly accurate, but there's everything there. So these are what the four priorities are, the student achievement, student growth, closing gra- gaps, and the on-track graduation and post-secondary readiness. This takes that guy that I, um, showed you at the beginning and really just narrows it down, makes it very specific so you're aware of what are these different areas to take a look at. Also happy to share that the student engagement indicators, which is simply absenteeism and dropout, we do not have any deductions and we're not even close to deductions for that. Our absenteeers, absenteeism rates are very, very low, it's outstanding. Again, that, that points to engagement, kids want to be there, they're feeling valued. Um, staff are honoring them for who they are, um, and when there are issues, these individuals are all over it, using resources. You heard Pat speak to, uh, you know, her world and what she has to do, unfortunately, her world also, uh, students with disabilities, unfortunately, and economically disadvantaged, connect a lot with absenteeism. There's, so there's a lot of connection and work with that, that her and her staff and her building leaders. are working through. But those rates are very, very low.
What's the definition of absenteeism? Is that like a misclassical?
I, I assume.
Unexcused absences or?
Unexcused absences.
I assume it's unexcused absences. I, it's not outlined, only said it's not outlined in the, there what, what defines that. But they use our Y's data. So what Lori and Haller Building Secretaries are, uh, providing for state data. So I would assume we'd be able to see that.
Okay, thanks.
Value-added growth measure, um, that's new as well, and that's really important. That's a way to be able to create apples to apples, um, in essence. Um, I had never seen the old tree analogy. I don't know if you've seen that or not, but it's a, it's a very basic and very good, um, lesson in terms of what value added means. And what it comes down to is essentially there's a predicted score. And if a student or a school exceeds that predicted score.
The oak tree analogy was created to introduce.
I didn't know it was going to talk to me.
If you exceed what the prediction is, it's basically saying your district is doing something right, um, based on the state average compared to similar populations. Um, otherwise, in the past, you really couldn't compare to other schools because of all the different factors. That's very, very helpful and allows us to say that, that number sixty-seven in the state, that, that works. We can say that no matter if it's a very small to a large school district, to a high population of, um, E L students, to a economically disadvantaged. So, um, you can spend some time in there if you're interested in determining, um, how that actually works. Let's just put everything together on one, one page. And, uh, for the, the, the majority of these cells, it's an increase from last year's report card. And if there isn't, uh, uh, an increase, I can assure you that building principals, um, have already been digging. We've been in conversation. We're already aware of potential issues on their own before the report card even came out. Um, and already looking at how can we better address certain areas, whether it's staffing, whether it's how we use certain time periods in the day, whatever it may be. But it's been very en- very enjoyable conversations to see how our, um, building principals and how our teachers are addressing some of the areas pre-report cards coming out. Confirmed perhaps by a report card and allowing us to try to, uh, really work on some subgroups of students that need additional support. That N A next year's student growth, again, that's referencing at the high school. Although they'll be using some more data and that should have some information. So just gonna go through the priority, uh, areas briefly, and you've seen these already. So priority number one, this is three years of data, again, from our D L M, our forward and our A C T plus writing. Um, the students taking those, it's a combination. They use three years just because of students that may not have taken it every year. It's just the best way, uh, that University of Wisconsin-Madison, statisticians, D P I, et cetera, work to determine these scores. The reason for fifty, a thirty-eight point eight out of fifty and thirty-four point six out of fifty is because those are worth fifty percent each of that score. And it drives out of a hundred. So as you can see out of this, um, all the state score doing really well there. Um, we have a reduction in the, the percentage of students in the below basic category in both subgroups. Um, an area we've noticed and discussed is we also have fewer percentage of students, however, in the advanced category. So we've pulled kids up, but perhaps why haven't the students in advance either remained or students taking that next step up? As well as we have some subgroups or, or grade bands, but a higher percentage in the below basic category. Um, and how it works is you receive points per category. When you're in the, in the advanced category, you get one point five points. They multiply that by the number of students that are in that. And there's proficient, basic, and below basic. And you get zero points for students in below, uh, below basic. In reality, we don't care about the points, right? We care about why are students in that below basic? We want to raise them up. The byproduct is, we get points. It helps our score overall. District growth, again, this is a very low percentage area in our overall, um, scoring because of the economically disadvantaged percentage we're at. Um, strengths, our E L A is above the state score, and we have a positive three-year trend in math, even though math is an area we want to continue to grow in. Both math and reading have some specific student subgroups and grade bands that we want to work on. We're, again, already in discussion. Things are already in motion before this report card came out. Closing gaps, broken into three areas. So twenty-five percent for D L A and, uh, for math. And then the graduation rate, uh, perfect, fifty out of fifty. And we, we don't have students that don't graduate from St. Clair Central, which is outstanding. All the way around. Again, math and, and, and reading, just again, some areas in our subgroups that we're noticing, uh, to continue to work. And, and if you're wondering about what's at the subgroups potentially, you can look at our E L. That is a growing population. Um, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged. Through this district, I've heard it referred to many times as becoming or has been a district of choice. District of choice means we see a whole range of families that want to come in for that second or third chance, potentially for that dissatisfaction with what the services are getting on the district, as you referenced, to the kids that are also high achievers and want to go to that next level. So we have that range of kids wanting to come into our district. And it forces us to adjust as a district and how can we serve and meet those needs. We have specifically that yellow population that is growing is now also entering middle school, uh, grade levels. It's maybe been at the elementary and now it's, it's, it's causing us to see how we can serve at the next level, albeit the high school level as well as, uh, years ago. So it's a great challenge to serve every dis- uh, every student in this district. Equity across the board is certainly important. Being measured, you know, this, and I just mentioned in this, um, one of the things that, uh, we don't have impact or score is, uh, some of those groups because of the number. So we have a super group, meaning we don't have, we don't hit the twenty in any individual group, um, with the groups that are being tested. So, uh, we have to combine and that helps. Then allow us to, allows the state to give us a score with regards to those super groups. So we anticipate, I think our freshman class right now has a high group of, um, students with disabilities. So that'll impact scoring as we go, uh, as those groups grow to, just so you're aware. Right now, um, sometimes score, our, our report card can be misleading based on, um, the groups that you have and that might, um, alter the score in some way. Not that we shouldn't be proud of what we have, but it might just not have all factors that various schools, other schools.
That's per grade level, twenty per grade level?
Correct. And that's, the last one is the on-track and post, uh, secondary readiness. So these are indicators that have been chosen by the state that are linked to later graduation and college entrance and, uh, across content success, predicts high school success. The eighth grade mathematics is supposed to predict, uh, high school success. Third grade is supposed to predict, again, uh, success all the way through. Um, so it's worth ten percent, ten percent, forty and forty, as you can see there. Um, very, very good. But again, the higher percentage of students in that below basic category, that links to what I've already shared, um, something we can look at, why, why more in that category versus pushing up.
So Nick, when you're looking at top ten schools, would you go in, for example, and look at eighth grade mathematic achievement? Uh, I'll say it this way, I don't really care what the average is. I want to know what the best are doing. So if I'm looking at math achievement in eighth grade in my ten best districts, where, where are their numbers at? Are you doing anything like that?
I haven't dug into that. Certainly, I know Kurt last year spent a lot of time at the high school level doing that. I know Shelley has a, an outstanding story. She shared with me a connection, basically. Um, I'll make it short, but she went to a conference way before this even came out, I believe. Is that right, Shelley? Before report cards came out? Connected with an individual fellow elementary principal that had taken their score from raised at thirteen points in one year report card. So seventy-six to an eighty-nine. I'll make up the numbers. I'm not exactly sure what it was. But she has become basically a, uh, an annoyance of that person. And it's, uh, for lack of a better term, but just is connecting with that person of what are you doing and why? Here are our areas of struggle. And it's led to discussions of, um, scheduling. Does our schedule fit the needs of our students and specifically our, our subgroup students? Let's, let's talk about, um, students with disadvantages, our students with disabilities right now. The goal is to keep them in the classroom, right, at grade level. That's become more of an exclusionary model. Let's not pull kids out and then they miss instruction from the experts. Let's say at the third grade level, let's pull them out so we can get them up to the third grade level. Well, now they're missing grade level instruction at the same time while we're trying to get up some of those skills. So those students are in the classroom more now. Well, how do then we remediate the skills they don't have to get them to that level? So we have an issue here. We, we need them in the classroom with the talent and experts, but we also need them to get the skills. So that's a, been a major topic of Shelley discussion with this school is looking at the schedule and how can we best serve those students with the staff we have that are already kind of spread thin and trying to be in classrooms yet their own classroom. So to answer your question, I've gotten off, no, I haven't dug in, but I know these, these building leaders have dug in specifically to schools to try to gain, what are they doing that maybe we can do? I haven't done that yet, but we've been in discussion.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And do you want to speak, uh, does anybody want to share anything maybe they found with others?
Well, I can tell you that, looking last year, John, we're towards the bottom of the middle order. But at the same time, when we compare schedules, Osceola's double dosing. So they have double the staff. They have double the math teachers. Um, all the other schools have went to block schedule, um, ninety minutes math. But at the same time, Osceola, the kids get sixty minutes of play at a week. They, they get banned every other, banned acquired every other day. Um, they get social studies each, each quarter. One quarter they have it, next quarter they don't. So they're doing a lot to bring up their math achievement, but at, at the expense of.
Some other things. What's the balance?
The music, social studies, and P E. I mean, do we want our kids with just sixty minutes of P E? We.
And that's the crux when you talk about even at the elementary, the typical older model has been pull them out of their lockets. No P E, no social stuff, whatever it may be from our math and English. Is that right? That's a decision, you know, a philosophy you have to determine. We have to determine is what do we want? Better math and English and what are we willing to sacrifice for that? As it is right now, we're working really hard not to sacrifice other areas.
Well, that's why our district guided principles and statements are so important when we're talking about, you know, educating the whole child. And, uh, uh, so it's, it's just, uh, it's a, it's a place as to where do we look? And you've said it three times at least tonight, and I agree with you. We're not doing it to get the score. The score is an outcome of doing the right activities in the right environments for the right reasons, right? And then the score is, is that outcome. But it's interesting to me that we continue to say, well, we're at a five-nine and the state average is a five-seven. I'd like to see we're at a five-nine and our top ten schools are at a eight-three. And here's what they're doing differently to be at an eight point three. And then we choose. Is that something we invest in that fits within what our ideals are? Um, but it, it gives us a different point of reference. So at some level, stop comparing ourselves to average. We're not average.
There's gonna be multiple variables to that scenario, you know what I mean? It's, scheduling is one of the many, I would think, that you're gonna have to delve into as to what they're doing separately.
Uh, yeah.
Right. I mean, but, but it opens up that conversation.
I'd just like to make a comment that that work, like Nick just mentioned, is being done. Um, Tim, um, at the opening in-service this year, you know, when we kind of started talking about top ten schools and where we want to go and what our goal is, shared the top ten report cards of these top ten schools from last year. So when you get to work, you start digging into those. I know, like, even our interventionist, uh, just speaking for the elementary contacted every single one of those schools and said, what are you working at? What are you doing for reading at the foundational level of elementary students? And how many minutes a day are you spending on reading? And, you know, just those kind of conversations is what it's all about. And comparing it to what we're doing or not doing.
And as we're building our one-year or two-year and our three-year plans, those are important triggers. You're, you're going and learning from the very, the best in the state, at least numerically the best in the state.
Right. So.
And we're doing the same thing, John. We, last spring, we spent the day at Point At. And, um, Jerry, the prince of middle school principal, I email probably, you know, once every week, if not once every two weeks, we talk back and forth. And we're doing a lot of things as a district that Point At is doing. But the one thing that we haven't done yet is, is the schedule. Again, um, just because of what has to give on that schedule. Because they are, where they have went in the last five years at Point At is incredible. But they've, uh, they've made some major sacrifices at the schedule level. Where I think we can work very hard in other areas, which we are, to see if we can pull it off without.
Yeah. And throw more time at it is only one option.
Mm-hmm. But.
Yeah, that's fine.
But, uh, so working with Jerry, we've, a lot of our standards work and a lot of our conversations. The four J's with our P D have been very beneficial. So we pulled and gleaned a lot of things from them already.
Thank you.
As, as well, I can add a sidebar to that. I've seen in the last few years, um, you as a board, admin team recommendations have increased staffing within buildings. And that plays a big role as well in the change. My daughter is a first grader, uh, although there was five sections. So she was in a group of twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five kids. As parents, we didn't like that. We understood at that time that was all it could become. However, now I think there are six teachers for every grade level except for kindergarten or fourth grade. So that's, that's lowered that average and that means every kid's getting a little bit more attention. It's things like that, making a financial commitment as well, that allows having two building leaders, two counselors. I've seen those things and those make a big role and a big impact. And I think those will show up as well.
I guess, question that I would have, looking at some of your charts and stuff, and I haven't had a, a lot of time to, to study them. But it looked to me, you know, remembering this, this district always used to be exceptional in reading skills. And I guess I'm looking at some of the trends and I'm seeing either they're staying level or they're dropping off. And that concerns me, you know, and I haven't looked at how far that drop-off is, but I'm just seeing the trend lines and it concerns me. And I see that we are improving our math scores or they're at least holding stable. But it seems like our reading scores are dropping off.
I think I've mentioned that a few times tonight, Howard, and I, I think, um, trying to be careful with my words, there's subgroups that are, that we're really working with of students on that more than overall. Overall, there's good data with regards to our reading in the L A. But we have some different areas that will help with that when we continue to work with those. So, yeah, appropriate observation.
And the other thing too is if we attack every variable at once, you, you never, you know, it's a scientific method, right? So, or, you know.
Don't change them all.
Yeah, correct.
No, I don't want to boil the ocean, but I do want to see, just, uh, at least hold our own and, uh, get the, the ship, continue going in the right direction.
That's why we do a curriculum review, you know, every three to five years rather than every year, you know?
We're, and we're actually in a great, been working a lot with Megan Elmer's and, and the elementary leadership team. And we're, we're in the midst of doing a pile right now that is proving something, units of study. Lucy Collyken's, uh, to be outstanding. And it's a shift we're gonna make here towards the end of the year and into next year in transition. Uh, Megan is, Megan's passion. If you haven't, haven't been around Megan, it's incredible. And the teachers that are piling this year, and we do believe in that it's gonna make a shift. It's actually what Osceola uses. I don't know if that's where it's originated from, but, um, I know that's, uh, a shift we're making. And we, that's more dedicated time in the classroom to reading, to reading, instead of trusting that reading is taking place out of our control at home. We're using the time that we have in control. Um, so that's just a quick brief on that, but it is a change already in the works to help address it. Um, this page just gives all the, the other information that's there, um, and, uh, kind of our specifics and such. There's our priority area weights for the district. If you look at our per building, that thirty-nine point five shifts to a thirty-eight point three, I think, in another building. Uh, but it is very, very close. And again, that's all based on economically disadvantaged. Please remember, a district report card treats all of our students like one building. Okay? And the elementary report card is on their students and. Okay, then the elementary report card is on their students and such, so it's not an average of the three buildings, it is a. A school district in terms of that's the building, okay, we'll use those numbers for that.
And when you say buildings, so if we have um, our virtual students, they're not included anywhere.
And it's an alternate rating.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure.
What's the right word, they're satisfactory, satisfactory progress, they're alternate rating. Next year, however, there will be a report card score, but it doesn't factor into our overall report card, am I accurate, and based on our numbers?
Yeah, so this year we actually had the option, if we could have had a number or one more year of alternate rating, um. Because they don't have the trend from the 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 growth data and all that. So we more than likely will never have that school calculated into our district report card. Because um, if you have fifty percent or greater of your students open enrolled, it doesn't count into your district report card. So with a virtual school, it will almost guaranteed we'll have more than fifty percent of our students open enrolled.
But you'll get a virtual school score.
Correct, next year we will have a score, yep.
Thank you. Um, you all heard a very detailed hourly hours hours presentation from our building principals a few weeks ago or months ago. District priorities, uh, so I we don't go in depth then again, but just a reminder, student, uh, district priorities, student achievement, climate. And adult culture, that lines with everything impacting the test, are impacting a report card and a byproduct uh, of of what we want. So that was what we've done before, the uh, the test was just again amazing as I spend more and more time around this team and. They already, they know their students and staff very, very well and what's happening in their buildings. And uh, have put things in motion, um, these are just a few things that I wanted to list. Uh, we continue to work together as an admin team on the coaching model and really causing for reflection by teachers and. And using a uh, validate, clarify and stretch model um, in conversation after they spend time in their classrooms as building leaders. As well, looking at SLOs and PPGs and making it perhaps more uniform and or specific to attack some of these areas. Uh, that we wanna see growth in. Student led conferences have have entered the middle school, uh, again, a big piece of students knowing where they're at. And and their own growth and then being able to talk about it. Uh, hey, kids are gonna own their success a little bit more versus a piece of paper trying to tell a story or a teacher talking about it. Um, as well, a lot of, a lot of conferences happening within classes. Um, in in our ELA department, actually, in terms of real one-on-one, more dedication to that as they work through papers and. Inclusion model continues to be just under a review, I've spoken to that enough in terms of what is best for our kids and how can we bring them up to grade level with the skills they're lacking? But keep them in front of their and with their peers, um, in most kinds of specific class. Continued standard base, uh, as you are certainly aware, middle school and high school, uh, within the next year or two will all be K twelve. Standard space, it's four K even, four K twelve, um, so it's great preparation and that continues to impact. I know Tim's children are both in 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 uh, some pilot classes. Kurt is working with students, he's sitting down and meeting with student groups to ask for feedback. Um, staff are sharing at the high school level how positive, how kids know what they have to learn. Um, I I don't, I don't wanna say it wrong, Kurt, what are you hearing, how are kids sharing, how are staff sharing in terms of just the pilot?
Uh, well.
Feedback you've gotten so far?
Yeah, um, when we meet with students at for over lunch, we had some, some of the same concerns that we'd heard, you know, what about the. Whatever grade conversion and so on, so we flipped it and we showed them that first and then everything just was like, okay, that makes sense. So just like the parents, if you remember, they were concerned about grades and scholarships and the whole thing. So I'm meeting with eight freshmen and they're also concerned about the same thing, but once we showed them the conversion, they liked the process. So it's been, it's good, but we have places to grow for sure, I mean, it's.
I'm noticing something. And I think that our students that we have at the high school level, the point system has been so ingrained in their minds. That a lot of them are not doing assignments, cause it's optional, which means they don't have to do it. And so you're seeing a, now as as material is built, a lot more students needing to redo. And I feel like it's kinda chopping up their learning, so I mean, a big focus is how do we get them to do that practice? That necessary, I mean, and I come from the math background, I mean, you've gotta do that practice. Um, to them, it's like, I don't have to do that, but then you don't pass the assessment, then you're redoing the assessment and then you're, you know, you're still not practicing the new stuff. It's kind of, I don't think it's to any fault of a teacher or the system, cause you look at sixth grade. Those kids do their homework every single day, it's not about points, they don't, you know, it's about learning. But I just think that they're a, they're a product of that system, you know what I'm saying? That, so they don't, I I, if you had the sixth grade, they're they're gonna do it, they're gonna buy in, they're gonna learn. But I think it's it's sort of detrimental to some of their learning now because they've, that system's been so ingrained. Do you know what I'm getting at? Um, so they're not practicing, um.
But it's equally. Uh, a sixteen-year-old compared to a sixth grader.
It is.
They they aren't gonna do anything they don't have to do. And a sixth grader doesn't know that that.
They have an option to do.
You know, like if if they've, it's, I I see it as part of that ingrained point system that they were so used to though, you know what I mean?
Speaking three-year-old child or what you said you're seeing, where are you seeing?
Well, um, my child, and then I was at conferences with a math teacher, that it's um, becoming more widespread. And then I had kinda questioned several students, um, uh, acquaintance students of my son, just, hey, you know, how are you do, you know, are you doing these assignments? And they said, if I don't have to do it, I don't do it, if it's set as out, I don't do it. Um, what about the online Alex, nope, you know, I've just just asked, you know, a few kids that I've, you know, had acquaintances and stuff with. And it's just, I I don't, it's to no fault of anyone, it's just, I think that the system hasn't completely changed the standard-based grades, right? You're a teacher, you're using your old ways of learning, you're doing the standards, they're gonna go back to the drawing board and they'll figure that out. I have faith in that, I just, um, it's frustrating right now.
So I think, I think there's some generalities there that I I don't necessarily agree with, there are some things that, yeah, I would agree, sixteen-year-olds, they don't have to do it, aren't gonna do it. I would say there's a forty-eight-year-old man sitting right here. But here's an example of um, what we know, we know that we have to embed those formative checks. Not assessments, just checking, just like, just good solid teaching within the classroom. And so we know that we have to build in practice with the expert. So if Trish is the math teacher, we, I want my son practicing with her in the room. Um, we also know that we had win time set aside for ELA and for math. And Emily Timmers and Kami Stansberry weren't using their win time, they weren't using their core resource time, I mean, over lunch. And so I asked them, Emily, why aren't you having kids in? Because they do one-on-one conferencing and they've changed their process within the classroom, she said, we really find that we don't need it. We hit them right, right there in the classroom, that's what we're looking for. Um, so I think we can get in a whole discussion about homework and usefulness or not, and I think kids should practice. Um, but we wanna try to get into a place where that practice is happening with the expert in the room. Um, which leads to looking at some other things like perhaps trimesters and giving kids more time with teachers and that kind of thing.
And do you think Kurt too, like just, um, maybe relooking at those those core standards and kinda cutting back and going deeper?
Yeah, one of that's going back to Emily and Kami, that one of the things that they said was that we thought we cut our essential standards to the essential stands, but we can, we can cut them even more now. Because we really know what we need to focus on, so.
But language is a big part of it too, homework is what you were told that you got graded on and practice is what you do if you wanna be good at something. So some of it's just, and you use the word practice every time you were talking about the positive side of it. And homework probably just goes away as a word and practice becomes the mindset. And the golf team's gonna make it to, or you're gonna make it safe, it's by practice. Everything, if you wanna do any better at it, it's by practice.
And then, yeah, and then you choose your practice, right?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great pickup, um, we have a list, we started a list of vocabulary differences between standards and what we're, what's traditional is, that's one of ours. Homework is punitive, it's, I gotta go and do this work, uh, we also talked about, well, we can get into this a lot, a lot.
No, I was just, you know.
Meaningful things to do at home.
It was just something that I was noticing and then in speaking to other math teachers at the high school, they were noticing too, but I think. Math was always a, we're gonna show you, you're gonna practice a little year and practice more and that's, that part's gonna have to adjust and change. And I'm sure it will, I'm just, yeah. We're kind of at an entree stage.
Yeah, it's squishy.
So other things on there as well, some other, uh, right now, we're in the process of, um, you know, like the quality instructional materials. Working through CISA in the state, there's, there's some really good models to use in terms of looking at. The rigor and coherence and usability of what we have in front of kids. Um, whether it's this company's materials or this or this or this and aligning with our standards. So there's a lot of different ways we're getting what our kids are getting, um, and making sure they're getting the best. So uh, I don't need to walk through the rest of these, and again, they align with what our building leaders are already doing through the district priorities. Uh, but in 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 all, when it's said and done, a lot to be very proud of and and happy of in terms of what this district has done, is doing, where they're going. Um, I'm excited to be a part of it and contribute in some way, knowing that ultimately the groundwork is done amongst these leaders here. At the building level with those teachers, with those paraprofessionals, et cetera. Again, I'm happy to ever sit down with anybody individually, go through more of it. John, we will be spending more time certainly going through data, it's enjoyable to look through other schools and try to reach that goal of top ten. Any questions on this time or whatever?
Thanks, thanks. Just need time to digest the numbers, give me time to ask more questions later. But thank you for the overview, gives idea where we are, so we're doing well. We can always do better, but we did well, let ourselves on the back of that, so, thank you. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is our student staff and community recognition, John?
Uh, we have several this month, uh, to, uh, a thank you to Tina Fern Denzer and Nicole Severston of the Baldwin Woodville Viking Middle School. Thank you for giving up your professional development time and coming to the SCC Middle School to help us get started with student led conferences. Presentation was awesome, gave us what we needed to get student led conferences going at uh, SCC Middle School. A uh, thank you to Eric Russell, who is the superintendent at Baldwin Woodville. Um, thank you for cooperating and uh, thank you for sharing your seventh grade experts on October fifth, uh, recognizing the great job that they did. Um, a thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Kaz and their children. Thank you for donating time and effort in helping build the new gaga pit at the middle school. Uh, there's about thirty kids each recess are enjoying the gaga pit daily, if you haven't seen it, it's pretty cool. Also to um, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Spitzmuller and their son and Mr. and Mrs. Traynor and their children. And then um, uh, also for the help with the gaga pit. Uh, thank you to Amy and Jesse Jared, thank you for donating thousands of dollars worth of equipment to our district. That their son Sam no longer can use for various reasons. I know that a young lady at the elementary has been using the wheelchair. And we have Becky Lee assessing a student to use the jogger. And so that's just a wonderful gift to us and our and our students. Um, recognition to Marie Hamlin, incredible job representing our school at state. Your individual effort was incredible to watch throughout the year, be very proud of all that you have accomplished. Of course, Marie was a medalist at the uh, at the state cross-country tournament this fall. Uh, to Maya Kaiser, recognition also for representing our school at state. And we are also very proud of her accomplishments and it was wonderful to watch her throughout the year. And um, same recognition to Bill Emery and the, all the coaches of the cross-country team. Congratulations again on reaching state meet and to the boys for the middle board of conference champion. You have represented Panther Nation at the highest level, we're proud of all you have accomplished. Keep up the great work and continue to push for greatness. Recognition to Tony DeSalvo and the coaches and the football team. Uh, congratulations on reaching the division four state tournament for thirty years in a row, as well as capturing your first middle board of conference championship. You have represented Panther Nation at the highest level, we are proud of all that you have accomplished. Continue the great work and continue to push for greatness. To Mindy Whitaker and the girls volleyball team, a recognition, congratulations on a great season and middle board of conference championship. You have represented Panther Nation well, we are proud of your accomplishments, please keep up the great work and continue to push for greatness. To Logan Kimberley and the coaches and uh, and the girls of the golf team. Um, also, congratulations on a great season and regional championship, um, also thanks for their recognition and accomplishments. Uh, to Jacob Egan, uh, thank you for clearing the trails and mapping the Synchro Central nature area as part of your Eagle Scout project. And finally, a thank you to the Hudson School District for letting our football team practice on their turf field in preparation for the state football championship. Your hospitality is very appreciated, those are the thanks and recognition from the board for this one, Howard.
Thank you, John, and thank you all for your submissions. It's not good to give those people the recognition they deserve.
He's right to give thanks and praise.
Amen. Okay. Uh, moving on, uh, next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding the early release of AP checks.
Uh, the district office is uh, asking for your permission to to um, change of practice, I guess. Um, we're asking that you allow the district office, um, some discretion in releasing AP checks in the amount of one hundred and fifty dollars or less. That uh, when, when um, time is of the essence, um, there're often circumstances where, you know, uh, just based on timing. Where folks have to wait, you know, three to four weeks, sometimes longer, um, to get their checks. Um, especially comes to light with athletic officials, um, and just with the timing, by the time the Wendy sends it over, you know, at the end of the week or beginning of the week. Then it's another week to the board meeting and then, uh, or then, I'm sorry, the board meeting just was completed. So it works out often the calendar, it's at least three weeks before some officials and we get contacted. Often, yeah, I get, I've been contacted, you know, it goes all the way, the chain, I mean, I, of course, um. Cause I think a lot of officials know me or whatever and just they're required and, so yeah, we're just asking that you you allow. Jen and Sandy and whoever else worked with AP checks to release those.
Is it any AP check or is it really to solve the challenge with the officials?
Well, there's a few other instances, like uh, you know, the judges for the music, you know, solo ensemble are gonna be here, you know. Three days from now and, you know, it's not often, but it's often enough where we're just like the board's formal motion granting permission to do that. And we, we figured a hundred and fifty, um, you know, official checks usually last a hundred, but there's once in a while like a volleyball quad where they're, you know, paid a hundred and twenty-five dollars or whatever, so just thought, make it that amount.
Now, I. I guess when I looked at it, I know we went from monthly bill approval to bimonthly bill approval to try and cut into some of those uh, problems. Doesn't sound like we've solved the the issue yet, I don't know if we, I thought we were writing the checks for the officials ahead. That they were getting the checks and then the approval was going after this.
Part of the issue is we need to have a Form W nine on file for them as well. So it's hard for us to cut the check in advance, especially when sometimes they end up subbing out at the last minute, so so-and-so can't perform the duty, so now someone else. the duty, so now someone else comes in. Do we have a W nine on file for them? Do we have, you know, we have these requirements that we have to meet. So it's difficult for us to do that in advance. So we came up with the process to do it after the fact in as timely of a manner as we can.
Yeah, I'm almost, I can only think of one or two schools that don't use vouchers anymore, which is because of that. They used to have checks wait for you all the time, now.
Yeah, officials got mad when they got a check at halftime instead of before the meeting, you know, so that they're, they're.
And, yeah, I just thought, you know, I don't know, we don't want that reputation, right, to be in that school that takes forever delivered checks. Talked to them, ladies in the district office, said, yeah, that would be a problem, but their current practice or policy is this, wait, wait for approval.
I guess I don't have a problem of writing and giving a, a check, but the problem's gonna be if, we've gotta have a federal paperwork on file.
Right.
And so.
They're gonna fill it out the day of the contest, but then we'd be able to issue the check the following week versus after the following meeting.
Uh, if they get that in ahead of time, or they know they're gonna be an official for our conference.
We're still not, but we're still not paying them till after the contest.
You'd hope that they would do that, but they just, they don't do it beforehand, they don't do it at the game. It's a struggle to get them to fill it out afterwards, and they still wanna get paid.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's a separate issue.
If you don't fill the paperwork out, you don't get the paycheck.
So that's a different issue.
But the, the biggest issue we had this year was support meetings got moved or shifted or holidays and spread the time out weeks on weeks. And these people denied their pay for over a month, uh, for a game they did back in Hoggins. And Jen's right, we had just for the game tomorrow night, it was about varsity official tonight, tomorrow night is basketball. So we can't pre-lowen some of that stuff, just athletics is flexible with official now.
I guess I don't have a problem issuing a check, uh, provided that the paperwork is on file. If we don't have the paperwork.
That's a control point.
I mean, that's the.
We don't have the paperwork, they don't get the paycheck.
Yeah, they're still filling out a voucher, and they're still, the, uh, tax paperwork is filled, is attached to the voucher.
Yeah, Sandy's resolute with the W nine, no matter who it is, and that, that's a separate issue, we're not asking for that.
That's a federal requirement, yeah, but I gotta, I gotta.
So, that, that, that's moot to this, I mean, and it is, if it's around officials, whether it's FBLA or athletic event or a music contest, if it's the issue with, you know, to get timely checks out to those that provide those officiating services to us, just, just to say, you know, if it's in that category and it's a hundred and fifty bucks covers it, then do it. I would make a motion, Howard, that we approve, um, AP released prior to board approval for officials, any, any level of official, up to a, up to a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, and of course, there's the control point with the federal paperwork.
You're considering a judge at a, at an event.
Yeah, anyone that officiates an event at the school, meaning a judge at a music contest, a judge at a.
Forensics meet.
Forensics meet, whatever.
Can you see any other, anything else that would fall into that? That's not a.
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
Is it like meal reimbursements and all that kinda stuff?
Is that too narrow, or should we open it up a little more?
Yeah, I, I mean, we could open it up to meal reimbursements and staff, like mileage reimbursements or different things like that. But again, it's, it's usually within a couple weeks, maybe three, depending again on the timing of the board meetings.
And if you're gonna do meal reimbursements, are you gonna do all of them? Are you, are you opening yourselves up to, to too many check runs and too many, I didn't get mine's and?
Can you run mine now?
Well, and that was one of the things I said to Tim when we first started talking about this, is that we're not gonna be doing an additional check run to make this happen, because we just don't have the staff to be able to do that.
Right, but it helps you with the timing of the meeting.
So we're still. Right, so we can cut the check and we can send it out that same day instead of waiting until the Monday night meeting.
You really only need it for people who don't work in the district, and if you work in the district eventually, you're gonna get paid back for your meal or whatever, right? I mean, so.
Yeah, uh, and, and if the problem is around timely payment of those that come into officiating events at our school, then I would just, just, just put it on that, and if it's not the right mandate, we'll.
Yeah, if you need more latitude after, after a while and you, you know, this is really the other issue, then bring it back to us.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Kirk's second.
I just said second.
You gotta speak up.
He did, I heard him.
I heard him over here.
I'm going down.
Not a Marine, you're not supposed to, you're not supposed to tune me out.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion on the issue? Okay, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next item is consideration of our board treasurer to approve post-board meeting invoices for the month of December two thousand eighteen. So move. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. This time I.
A motion is second to approve our board treasurer to approve, uh, post-board meeting invoices for December two thousand eighteen.
Trish, are you familiar with this? It's just, then we only have one meeting in December, it happened so early, and then Scott just goes in and picks out that second one first.
He doesn't have to read it to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
Yes, exactly.
So, and then we come back and, uh, we'll approve all those, uh, vouchers and stuff in January.
So, yeah, it's just for the check run.
Any further discussion in the motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Did you have to order the Santa hat again?
Okay, uh, we have second reading of several policies, starting with policy four four three point two, student conduct on. Student conduct on, uh, school buses. I don't believe we had any changes in that one, we, uh, looked at it the last time.
Motion to accept policy four four three point two, student conduct on school buses for second.
Okay. A motion is second to approve policy four four three point two. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next policy is five twenty three point three regarding employee assistance program.
There's only one update.
Yeah. So, we have a motion.
Approval as presented in today's meeting.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
I got it.
Okay, we have a motion, Scott's second, John, approve five twenty three point three, employee assistance program as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, moving on to the next policy, five twenty three point one one, employee alcohol and drug testing. Uh, this is pretty much a repeat of regulations from the, uh, federal transportation. Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion, Scott's second, John, any further discussion? All those in favor of the policy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next policy is policy six ten, fiscal management goals. Uh, we had one update, uh, in, uh, number, point number four, so thank you, Kirk. Is there any, uh, questions or concerns with that policy? Move approval with changes. Okay.
Second.
Uh, motion, Scott's second, John, approve the policy with the changes noted. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is policy seven fifty one point two one, surveillance camera use on school buses.
No changes, move approval.
Second. We have a motion, Kirk's second, Scott, approve the policy as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is policy seven sixty, food services management policy.
The only question I had on that was, uh, number one, assuring that all students in the district receive proper nourishment, do we wanna say while in our care? I don't know if you were on. We've got no control outside of it. Right. I mean, you'd think that would be common sense, but I don't know if we need to.
Yeah.
Put that in there.
Assure that all students receive proper nourishment while in care of the district.
Yeah, something like that.
While.
Okay. Is that acceptable?
Charge or something like that, yeah.
I don't have a problem with it. I don't think we can control anything outside of the.
No, and if we don't need to add that, we can leave it as is.
It's fine, you can chalk it up and say. I think it's okay.
It's implied.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the, the only other question I had on this one is, um, this speaks to about our food service. So it's really in the same aspect of what David was at, I'm just thinking about if a student or family choose not to participate in our food service program. There's some of these points that we, we, we cannot, right? And so, i- it's of the students who we want to participate in the program, these are our obligations too now.
Yeah, 'cause if you bring a lunch, you're eating what you bring.
I'm not gonna check and make sure it's nutritious, I'm not gonna take away their Doritos and Skittles.
But that's implied also, that in compliance with federal reg- regulations.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, okay. But I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're speaking of those who choose to participate in our food service program, these are our commitments now. So if it's implied.
I would say the first sentence says that.
In compliance with federal.
No, participate the, participates in a school lunch breakfast program, and in compliance with that, we'll do this.
Okay, so this is part of the school, it's saying it's part of the school.
I, yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, number two says we serve the high-quality meals.
I'm getting a heads nod from Tammy, so we think we're okay?
I think we're good.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, Scott's second, John, approve the policy seven sixty regards to food services management. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the policy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next policy is policy seven sixty three, management of student, uh, school meal accounts. I think there was only one change in that policy, I believe. Uh, there were several. Excuse me. Okay, there were several, uh, additions mainly, uh.
Any making the language the same, I'm just saying.
Yeah. Consistent language, uh.
Families versus parents.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Move approval with the highlighted changes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, Kirk's second, Scott, approve the policy as presented, noting the highlighted changes. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have one other point, and I know I missed the last minute, I apologize for that. Is there anywhere in this, 'cause I did not see it, what the student receives? Should they be delinquent or, or, you know, um, is it in there?
Instead of, um.
But that, but that says a phone call, the negative lunch account will receive a letter from food service, they'll be contacted by it.
We intentionally.
They talked about it.
So, okay.
Intentionally have to, 'cause we really don't want to have to deny anybody a, a lunch.
So, this is policy and then everything was just happening.
I, I, no, I, right, but within our practice, we're not gonna deny a student a lunch, are we?
No.
No.
No, okay, go ahead.
No, we went.
We give them the lunch, but they don't get a lunch card.
Look, I just wanted to make sure that, I wasn't looking to add language, I was looking to make sure we have an assurance that any child in our care is gonna be fed regardless of their.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Studentma- account.
Or, we're, we were trying to make the issue that non-payment or overdue lunch accounts were the responsibility of the family, not necessarily the individual student. And so they weren't going to be denied.
Got it, I'm good.
And we can't have policies that says you'll eat whether you have a balance or not.
Yeah. We're forcing food, and you need that.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Any further concerns? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion to accept policy seven sixty three, management of students' school meal accounts with the highlighted changes noted. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Can I just have one clarification on that previous policy? Did you still want that, um, line in there about, um, while in the care of the district?
No.
No.
No. We figured that it pretty much said that.
Oh, as presented.
Totally.
Okay, got it.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda is, uh, considerate, consideration of eliminating board policies, starting with policy two hundred dot eight six zero with regards to food service.
These have to be individual motions or do them all at once?
So we've just replaced them all.
Yeah, that's all we've done is replace them with ones that will be very fast, right?
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion that we eliminate board policy two hundred eight sixty, food service administrative regulations two ten eight sixty are food service program. Policy three hundred two ninety five, bus driver substance abuse, and policy three hundred dot three hundred, bus rider rules as being not needed anymore, 'cause they were already, we have new policies that replace them.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, Kirk's second. John, everybody understands the motion? The policies we're eliminating.
I can say it louder if I. D one through four.
Okay. Okay, is there any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the next item, which is consideration of the first reading of board policy four fifty eight with regard to school wellness, nutrition, and physical activity. Okay. Questions or concerns there with that policy?
So, um, this policy, you can see the, uh, updates, um, from the current policy presented as a first reading, as well as, um, the policy checklist that the wellness committee went through, uh, as a guide to ensure that everything required is in there. So, this is the first reading, um, we put it on this agenda, 'cause there'll be a food service audit in January, so we want to make sure we got first reading done here and a second reading in December if possible, so that it's in effect, uh, time for the food service audit.
Under nutrition education goals, number six, pop will not be for sale during regular school hours, everything else, one through five, agrees with the district, will support and promote, ensure that food, blah, 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 the school district will, pop will not be for sale. Dramatically, that's a nightmare.
Okay. I don't know how we, we word that, but it's, the school district will prevent the sale of pop during school hours or.
Soft drinks.
Yeah, and additionally, uh.
To say the, uh, school district will not sell pop during regular school hours.
So, uh, Tammy, I met for a monthly, um, meeting this, this afternoon, and she's, uh, yeah, it's funny, mentioned that one, 'cause we were gonna say, ah, but it is available to staff, to adults in the building, so we'll work that in there, the language, yeah. Will not, so the district will not serve, or no, make available.
Sell.
Does it need to be under nutritional goals if it's under food service goal? I guess that, that covers more all district than food service, just specific to food service.
So number six covers it on food service goals.
Market one of those food beverages that are consistent with. Market only those food and beverages that are consistent with blah, 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 blah.
Well.
But as school as there's been.
Yeah, that's not necessarily a food service issue.
Yeah, 'cause prevent the sale of pop to students during regular school hours.
The school district will prevent the sale of it.
Or, will.
Not allow the sale of pop to students, yep.
Will market only those food and beverages that are consistent with smart stack standards during school hours.
Does that have to be sale? 'Cause then you say, oh, I'm not selling it, I'm giving it away.
Also, I'm looking at, yeah, I'm still under nutritional and educational rules.
Me too, number six.
Right, I'm saying you use number six from the one below, just modify it to.
Oh, just take six and put, and from food service goals and, and bring it up to number six nutritional.
Instead of market.
Mm-hmm.
Would that satisfy the requirements? And keep six there as duplicate or cut, copy, paste?
That replaces six on nutrition and it stays on the food service goals because they're too separate.
Does the pop machine get turned on after hours?
Three, three thirty.
There is vending machine available to the staff, but students don't have access to it.
Even after, even after hours?
Mm-hmm.
Like basketball games, something like that?
We have vending machines at the high school, but there is no pop in those vending machines.
Or at the middle school.
And there's no pop.
Cover.
The only place there is vending machines and pop is in, in, um, in the teacher's office alone.
So do we even need that? Pop will not be for sale during regular school hours?
Well, I think it needs to be covered because it's locker during concessions and we're playing, uh.
And the vending machine's not the only place that we could do it.
Games and such like that.
If the school store decided to put it in with their coffee and had pop for sale, they can't have pop for sale.
They can't have, right.
We're just, we're gonna run into some fuzzy area there with for sale or market.
And I think market's a bad word, 'cause that just says, you can't advertise pop in my book.
Right, that's what I'm saying, there's, there's a, there's a fuzzy area there of marketing it or selling it without.
Cannot sell or provide, right, take out, provide or, and sell only those food and beverage that are consistent with the smart choice standards. And pop is not on the smart choice.
I mean, I'm just thinking if we're gonna put it in print as a policy, we might as well get it right.
Well, the concern that I have with it, uh, you know, saying it's not gonna be, uh, for sale. It's not gonna be for sale during the regular school hours, but, uh, you've got the concession stands at the, uh, ballgames, you know, basketball games, volleyball games, et cetera. They'll be selling it.
It says this does not apply to food.
But not during school hours.
The last, the last line under food ser- the last line under food service goal says this does not apply to foods and events outside of school hours.
It's not during school hours. Okay.
So.
But the all day track meet could have a, that's during school hours, and you're saying you can't sell pop at that, so.
So what term do you want me to use, market, sell, provide?
I would use, I think you got.
That all?
Well, I, I don't know where market helps us.
Will not sell or provide, sell or provide?
Yep.
Okay.
And. Or you make it a positive statement and you can say, will sell or provide only those food and beverages that are consistent with the smart snack standards.
Got it.
That goes, that goes with the other line.
During regular school hours.
Okay. Does that meet the, uh, satisfaction of the board?
So, does this cover all those things, so, I think about, um, someone goes down to the food ser- uh, the, um. Foods group and says, well, we wanna have a hundred cupcakes made for whatever, can they do it? I mean, it's, they've gotta meet the standards depending on what the use is, right? Or like the coffee shop, if you're selling lattes, they have eighty grams of sugar in them, that doesn't meet the smart snack. Not that it has eighty grams.
Prefer to be experts.
Tammy, so for.
The cupcake thing, if Courtney Hawkins made, that'd be curricular maybe.
Right, curricular, they might be learn how to make cupcakes, but can the German club go in and say, you know, we want to, uh, have German chocolate cake as a food experience in ours? Can they have German chocolate cake made by?
You, you can give them away to the students, can that sell the product to the students? If it doesn't, within a school hours.
So maybe we should say sell, 'cause that would be provide.
Yeah, but, well, but, Courtney, they will sell like that, their restaurant experience, do they still do that at the end of the year, that food truck stuff?
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, they do.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that we have the right protections in place for when it's curricular foods, but.
Okay, go back to the, the district will not.
Maybe just go pop, just pop.
Sell up during school hours.
Yeah, just leave it.
Just clean up the, the grammar on it, but.
But, okay, so. So, we're selling coffee in the morning at the coffee shop, right? Does that have to meet the smart snack standards?
Yeah, so, those standards are for like, if you're selling stuff to kids, so any like fundraiser, they're not, if, if it's a half hour before school starts. Or a half hour, to a half hour after school starts, it has to follow within those standards. If you're selling it, but it's a person who, like, you could give it away. Like, let's say a teacher wants to have a reward, then they wanna give the cupcakes to the students, they can buy the cupcakes and give them to the students, and that's, that doesn't follow under the smart, smart snacks.
We can't sell them.
Okay.
But if you're selling them, fundraisers, selling them under a la carte, so then you have to follow those rules, the smart snacks.
Even if. Even if a fundraiser.
So there's some smart snack standard about how much sugar you can have in your coffee in the morning?
Yeah. There is, probably is, there's sodium and, uh, fat for breakfast.
Can't stop them from putting their own sugar in after, after you sell.
You just can't use that pump syrup, that's pure sugar.
Sugar free.
You don't put it in, they do.
Okay, well, I guess I'm, the one concern I had, uh. Reading this, and I don't re- don't remember where I read it, in the policy, had to do with, uh, snacks that are provided in the, uh.
Classroom.
Class, classroom.
Made in a commercial kitchen.
They had to be, so, if mom decides to send a treat for kid's birthday to the classroom, they're not allowed to do that because it's not produced in a commercial kitchen.
That's mostly because of allergies and burning labels and.
It's under foods provided but not sold.
Number six, will not sell pop drinks during school hours.
Still sleeping at night. Grammatical like or not, David.
No, then it'll be fine if it's fingers like that.
Okay, yeah.
Grammatically fine.
Yeah.
I think it's covered there.
And I think that your marketing is, doesn't, isn't just advertising, it's offering for sale and selling, that, the whole thing is your marketing program, it's from year to year.
Okay.
So keep market.
On s- food service goals.
Okay.
But on nutrition, education goals.
The district will not sell pop during regular school hours.
Right.
Yeah, my main thing was number six just didn't read as.
Will, pop will, the district will, pop will.
I've got lots of scribbles.
It was just.
Pam's keeping notes too, oh, no. Let's make sure to do this right, I don't want Marty.
Pam lost.
Pam, go back and watch the video on this one. It's on the replay.
So, someone, someone started, or the purpose of the video to help Pam.
I've got it.
Just restate what we're saying.
So, nutrition, educational goals, number six, the district will not sell pop during regular school hours.
Yes.
And number six, under food service goals, is gonna stay exactly the same.
Yes.
And, that's it, have we changed anything else yet?
Motion to approve policy four five eight.
Nope, 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 it's first reading.
What, first reading?
First reading.
Be carried away now.
Don't be a group of a mess yet.
Just wanna get past.
The classroom celebration.
Okay, so the bullet point that I, I was concerned about, uh.
Food and beverage sold outside the school meal program. Oh, no, sorry, uh, one more up from that, so.
Due to, due to possible food allergies or dietary restrictions, food brought in and to be shared during the school, they must be prepared in a licensed commercial kitchen labeled with nutrition.
Cause it'll say, maybe you could choose.
And that wasn't changed a couple of years ago.
Yeah, and that has, it just has to do with food allergies and making sure that kids can read it and look at it.
And with all the different food allergies that we have with the students now, if it's contaminated with cross contact, yeah, with the different products, um, yeah.
Okay, now that was a concern that I brought up. Get it answered, so. Okay, are there any questions or concerns with the policy? Okay, then it will stand approved as the first reading, but we will bring it back in the next meeting on, uh, December eleventh. Okay, uh, then the next discussion on the agenda is with regards to, uh, the two thousand nineteen health insurance benefits, so, Jeff.
So in previous years, with our multiple plans that we offer for health insurance, we've always equalized the cost. So that no matter which plan the employee chooses, the cost to the district is the same. And this year, Tim and Elaine and I had a discussion regarding this because we wanna promote our employees to be on that highest deductible plan, the thirty-five hundred seven thousand plan. Which promotes consumerism and making good healthcare choices and different things. Um, you'll notice at the top of the exhibit that the premiums for the thirty-five hundred seven thousand plan are going up quite a bit more than the premiums for the lower deductible plan. And that's due to some health issues of the, some of the people that are on that higher deductible plan, so they're, when they project out, they're thinking that the expenses for that plan are going to be higher. What it causes when we try to equalize those plans so that the district pays the same amount, is that it would shift HSA dollars from that higher deductible plan to the lower deductible plan. And that's not what we want, we wanna keep those people on the higher deductible plan. So after we talked, we came up with the scenario that we would increase the premium rates to the appropriate rate. And we would keep those HSA dollars the same as what they were in twenty eighteen. So if an employee chooses the thirty-five hundred single plan over the tw- two thousand dollar lower deductible plan. It would cost an additional two hundred and fifteen dollars per year to the district. Same thing for the family plan, if they choose the higher deductible plan, by keeping those HSA dollars the same. It's gonna cost a little bit more, about four hundred and eighty-eight dollars a year. And again, we wanna keep those people on that higher deductible plan, so we can promote that consumerism. Otherwise, in a couple of years, when we no longer have that cap on our plan rates, we're gonna be in some serious trouble. So, we, overall, this will increase the cost to the district about thirty-six hundred dollars for the year, when you net out the difference between the two. Um, one thing that will help offset that is we had budgeted for a three percent increase in our long-term disability rates. And those rates came in flat for twenty nineteen, so that's about a fifteen hundred dollar savings there. So the impact isn't substantial, but Tim, Elaine, and I all felt that it was very important to keep as many staff members on that higher deductible plan as possible.
Does it create the opportunity for some to flip to that high plan, does it make it economically valuable to?
They could if they, if they chose to, they could certainly do that, we're have, we're, we have the open enrollment period going on right now, it actually started last Thursday. And will go through December third, so they have the choice of which plan to choose for the upcoming year. So, yeah, if they go to that higher deductible plan, they will get a little bit more in the HSA, same as what it was the previous year. But it'll cost the district just slightly more.
You said it's two hundred and fifteen dollars per person on the single.
Right.
And there's thirty?
For those, right.
And there's fi- four hundred and eighty-eight dollars per, on the family, and there's seventy?
On the family.
Or it's thirty-six hundred?
Because that, it's based off the budgeted amounts, so we budgeted a six point three eight percent overall increase. And so you can see in that second section up there, we budgeted twenty-three thousand five forty-one seventy-two for a family plan. And ten thousand five seventy-seven fifty-five for a single plan. So really, those people on the two thousand deductible single plan, the district is paying less than that ten five seventy-seven. So that's where some of that difference comes in.
Okay.
So because this was a different from our past practice, we wanted to make sure that you were aware of this change.
Okay, so what do you need from us? Motion to approve the changes?
We can, I mean.
I think this was just letting us know.
It, it was kinda just to let you guys know, um, we've already sent it out to staff that this is, is what's going to happen for next year. Because we had that open enrollment period started last week.
Okay.
So I don't think we necessarily need a motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then I guess you've got the board's blessing.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, uh, other business, again, reminder, the WASB State Convention coming up in January, twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. Apparently, there's some rooms available yet, if anybody's schedule has changed, uh, let Pam know as soon as possible. So, uh, if you're gonna find somebody to fill the rooms or we will let them go to other districts.
I cannot go.
Okay, and Jeff said he couldn't go, so. Um, is there any other, other business, uh, come up? Uh, I would mention one thing, uh, the CISA eleven board superintendent annual meeting. Has been preliminarily scheduled for Monday, March twenty-fifth, if anybody is interested in that. So, uh, they will have a speaker there, I am not sure who the speaker is yet, but, uh, they promised that it will be entertaining, so. Okay, anything else? Okay, hearing none, uh, we have the important, uh, dates coming up, uh, December, there is no scheduled SCC board learning meeting for December. Our next regular board meeting will, uh, we've got a way to benefit mini meeting, uh, work session scheduled for December tenth. A regular board meeting is scheduled for seven P M. in the district office on December tenth. January seventh is our SCC board learning and special meeting here at six thirty, the district office. And then we have the convention, January twenty-third through twenty-fifth in Milwaukee. And January twenty-eighth, uh, is our next regular, uh, scheduled SCC board meeting at seven P M., that will be the fourth Monday of January. Are there any other dates that I missed?
Tammy, do we have a wellness meeting on the fifth?
On the fifth.
And we need to get a communication meeting set, and this has been perfectly terrible with business travel and hearing commitment, so.
It's a bad year now too, with hol- with holidays coming up.
Yeah, so that might have to continue to January, or we'll, we'll get it started by September.
Okay.
Can you communicate that, of the communication meeting? Communication meeting?
No, because we don't know what we're communicating or how we're communicating or where we're communicating at.
There's no policy.
We have no tool.
We have no tool for it.
Right, so until we have that.
Okay. I was starting to lose control.
What, it said seven fifteen?
Oh, no. Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
It's not for sale. That's my standard of that.